We were up to for the last seven months at this point. You looked at a couple of documents, probably this document was the biggest one that we dealt with in the last.
I read it on every single page.
Good. This was the.
Mr. Chair, where is that document?
It's attached. It's in SharePoint. And these are the objectives and priorities and once those were starting to show up and from DJNA or they were starting to print some things, they printed some preliminary ones that they had gleaned from other plans and just kind of the wording that it looked like Park County might like and this and that. So they gave us some stuff to start with. Then they, we sent it out to the committee of nine and they went through them and were allowed to reword, add, subtract, do whatever. That was all put together on a very large spreadsheet with their information as to who said it. So then we did some evening meetings. I think we had three on this document where we went through every one of them and came to, I won't say a hundred percent agreement, but a consensus agreement on how it would read. And so there were, there was quite a bit of discussion on some and others that were just kind of basic that went on through. It just kind of depends on which area we were working in. But that's where I would say ninety percent of the committee's time was spent was on the priorities and objectives as it worked through. And then DJNA put together basically the NRP plan as you saw it come off the printer. It's a little tough. It's hard to read in the beginning and Joy and I talked a little bit about this, but it's got a lot of front end load that I don't think people are going to want to read or deal with because it talks a lot about what the federal agencies regulations and stuff are, and I don't think we need that in here, maybe as an appendix at the end if people are interested in looking. But I think we need to definitely put in the front part down to just be why the plan exists and then go right into the areas that we're going to do.
Yeah, we're gonna see if I could. How do we end? What's the, what's the timeline on that? Okay, we're gonna work on this today and make any changes that we want.
Right.
So it's still gonna be in draft form. How are we gonna get it out to the public?
Well, that would be through the normal advertising that it's available to look at. It can be online on our website and take concerns and comments that way.
What's the recommendation as far as the timeline commenters?
Oh, Joyce, I'm not sure what's required.
I mean, I wouldn't do less than sixty minutes.
Yeah. And that.
I would only suggest.
And I have had a few phone calls from interested parties in the county that want to look at it. They just asked that if we put it out right before the holidays that we don't make the timeline that short because they were worried about the timeframe to get to look at it. So I, you know, even if we said first of March at this point, you know, to have everything backed by, we'd be fine. I don't think the state had a limit as to when we finalize this for the funding scenario. Okay, I think we're covered on that. I can check the emails that we've had. But so the, the idea today was to, to get your take on, on what you see in here, what we might want DJNA to change before it goes out to the public. And if there was any of those objectives and priorities that the commissioners adamantly disagreed with, we need to clarify that a little bit before it was out to the public because we know those aren't going to happen. So there's no sense in sending those out.
Yep.
But if you, if you felt comfortable with what you saw, the other thing that jumped out to me was that it starts with planning and then it went into a couple of other subjects and then it got back to land use planning. And I think that land use planning should be right behind the planning because those priorities and objectives follow. So I think it's, there's a couple of order things that need to happen, but that's, that's what I see right now.
Well, you know, personally, all in all, I was, when it finally was product was a result, I really was, I, I kind of thought it was gonna be weighted way on the environmental side of things, but then in that first.
Right.
But it, but it wasn't. I think it's, it's pretty good. I, you know, I've got some recommended changes in wording. I think it's probably a little longer than what we need. Your suggestion about taking all the government stuff out, putting it at the end of the appendix. So if it's there, if somebody wants to read it, I think it's very good.
So Commissioner?
Yes?
We did receive a template from WCCA and that is what drove the table of contents initially. Our table of contents doesn't match that exactly. They've added the legal section. They've kind of expanded the organization section, you know, under their own, I guess however they, they solve best. And then they kind of add these overarching planning objectives and planning priorities, which, you know, were not part of that, that template. But everything else pretty much falls under that WCCA template that we were asked to.
So we're basically required to follow that template?
No, but it's suggested so that there is uniformity between the programs. And then further, you know, we have the, the requirements that we're supposed to cover in, in the whole grant piece of it. And so there were those bullets. We have to make sure that you, you know, completed the public process and you have to do A's. We have to make sure that we don't forget those bullets because that is kind of what keeps our money, you know, available to us. If you don't do those things, then we don't, you know. So the best one, remind us of this.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we on record or no?
No, we didn't have to convene. We, we haven't convened. This, this is work, so.
All right. I, sorry, should I pause that?
Yeah, probably.
Well, we've only got about.
I don't know unless, Joy, do you want to record any of this?
I really have no preference.
Well, if you don't need it, I don't need it with people.
So let me just mention that House Bill fifty-four requires to be eligible for the funding of our resource plans, identify objectives and priorities for the use development and protection of natural resources, be developed or revised in public meetings, held in accordance with statute, and be based on criteria established by the governor's office in consultation with the counties and consistently apply each comprehensive natural resources plan. So we have those criteria for the county plans and part of this memo. So there's the statutory criteria and then there's the governor's office policy. So I'm just kind of looking at this quickly to make sure. Yeah, so we have to develop and revise the plans in public meetings. We have to clear resources and issues to be addressed, which leads to who the resource assessment. And, you know, in the beginning of the, the document, you see they define resource assessment and objective number. That's all from this criteria that are required. Should also discuss our customs culture and economic stability, must be consistent with state federal law. And needs to address each of the following resource areas. And of course, there was a whole laundry list of them, which are in the plan. We need to show that we're collaborating with other agencies. And then we should, we are encouraged, you are required to include provision for updating or revising this point. And then again here, that's just a recommendation was in the document. So I just wanted to go back to those requirements that by the state and as part of this funding. So I don't know. Do you want to just kind of start jumping through the section?
Well, I was gonna ask, how do you want to proceed on this? You want to go page by page or?
As well. I, I don't think it'll take that long unless you all have a lot of edits, but.
Willie, do you want to go through the committee's objection?
I think it would be necessary that you look at every objective and priority because these will become what Park County feels are the objectives and priorities. So at a minimum, we need to touch upon these those. And then you need to look at all of them, not just the ones that the committee kind of ended with high priority. You know, there's a bunch that they just said, yeah, we have to be up to reading. And there are a bunch that they didn't. And so we had to go through those with a fine.
Well, I know one of, one of the things that, that kind of jumped out to me was basically the lack of, of a better term, the lack of, of a lot of emphasis put on the social economic impact to the natural resources and account. And then going to the RMP plan with the BLM, that was one of the things that really stopped us holding on our track. We presented all of this, you know, the economic data. And they basically just stood and said, we don't care. And they had their own data and that's what they used as far as the economic impact. The oil and gas and bridge and those type of things on the county. And so I, I think somewhere in here in the document, we need to have a lot of emphasis put on the importance of the socioeconomic effect on Park County.
So I need to move here.
Oh, first, first, you know, and it's under planning. And, you know, Park County recommends federal state planning, ever takes into account best available science, all federal state planning documents will. And then it talks about those things. There's very little in there that really focuses on the, the economic benefit of the natural resources that are part of. I don't know what they are. With plan, when we were going through that, that's when we did our data quality challenge. And it brought everything to a screaming halt and then the governor intervened. Anyway, I won't go into that. We lost a lot.
So is that, is there a particular document that you feel should be folded into that conversation as well, or do you just want the subject generally expanded upon?
Just, just the subject matter itself expanded more emphasis put on, hey, if it's dealing with, with federal land managers in the future, you need to take into account and considerate the economic impact of the natural resources on the county. Does that make sense to everybody?
That's really an objective.
It is.
Do, do we have an objective that?
Well, yeah.
I thought I did. I thought I read it in there.
And that actually.
It's, it's, it's kind of woven in. There's so many different areas, you know?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
So one of my observations is that the, these are kind of thirty thousand feet. The introduction's too long, ten pages. The average, like Dossie said, the average person sits down, you're lost by page three. I mean, you're just, so somebody needs to put in some effort and figure out what are the main, the main points and get it into two or three pages. So somebody will read it. And to Joe's point, that would be one of the paragraphs that's really important in a two or a three page introduction. I mean, there's so much data and information referenced in the introduction.
Right.
So I, I think, I mean, if we, the general public, that, that may be the only thing they read is the introduction and then they might go to certain spots after that. So and, and to speak to Joe's point, that could, the socioeconomic could be in there. Like there was one chart that showed about all the land that's in Park County for the different agencies. I put that in the introduction. Well, it's numbers, you know, that, that the forest is how many millions of acres, you know? That's why this thing's important because they have those, I mean, that really caught my attention when I saw that chart. That's why this thing's important. And I sent these all to Dossie. And you, she talked about the priorities. I like the changes in land use priorities much better than the overall priorities I thought. Anyway, page eighteen versus page nineteen.
Excuse me, we're, we got a meeting here. We're gonna, we're gonna have to change horses real quick.
All right.
So Colleen, if you want to put it on the record, please. Okay, well, Sam, please, please.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to very proudly, for which it stands, one nation under God, and in this world, with liberty and peace.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're just.
To report you. There you go, so we can hear.
Okay, Susan, are we live streaming now?
Yes, we're live streaming. Unfortunately, we have a delay, so we have to start five minutes before.
But I'm, but I'm good to go.
You're good to go.
Good to go. Okay. We have one item on the agenda and this is Park County Planning and Development Director, Joy Hill. Park County Planning and Developmental Employee, David. Thank you to David.
Chairman, till as you're aware, we, we met to discuss a potential merit increase for the office, Assistant Three in my office. I presented to you my keys for that proposed increase and you asked that we get in public session to.
Just for the record, how much increase are we talking?
Um, it is a single step increase from a grade fifteen step five to grade fifteen step six, which would increase maybe a fifty-four cents an hour increase. This would require.
And this particular person has their job description changed at all since COVID hit?
So their, their job description is the same by title, but what they're actually doing is different. And so in part, that is because we didn't have a small wastewater administrator, which meant a lot of duties had to shift to a lot of people. It was different than usual. But this individual always goes above and beyond and is doing things way beyond what I would expect for that particular role. Reviewing staff reports, writing notices, even reviewing the regs, you know, doing GIS work. It's, it's a very versatile position. And oftentimes this individual is diverting traffic that would otherwise need to go to a planner. Doesn't even need to go to a planner. This person's taking care of it. So this individual has been in the office for two years. It would have been my expectation to have a review of time in service at one year. But as you know, I was told not to bring any requests to you at that time. I brought this request before you at budget time this year as well and was turned down to even be heard. And so I'm back again. This individual's two years in service and is killing it. As you're aware, I'm frustrated because I have a formal process to share with my employees to explain to them how they go through the step system in this county. It's very difficult as a department head to supervise people when you can't give them expectations on performance or, or give them some level of expectation of how to go through the step system. So I argue why we have a step system if we don't have any way of getting through the step system, but I, I'm just, I see such a inconsistency with the way these requests are handled. Literally one department gets none, another department gets.
Well, if, if I could move forward and I would hope that the new chair, when they get installed and come January, first meeting in January. And that's something that I would like to get taken care of because in the past, we don't have a set policy as far as how we're doing it. So we've been handling it all kinds of different ways. And I think moving forward, we do need to have a set policy of what time of year we're going to look at merit raise and when we're not, and what basically will qualify some fun for a merit rate. So hopefully the new chair can get that taken care of.
I would really appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, question to Joy on this particular issue, please.
Um, Joy, and we didn't replace the, allow you to replace this small wastewater position. Where did the, where did the money that was allocated for his salary go? Was that taken away?
That money was taken away. I was told not to touch that money. I did not reassign that money. I was told to save the money and we didn't, we didn't touch it. It was given back.
So I mean, as far as Joy's concerned, we've already approved her for a new full-time position.
Yep.
And so this is with your new money. Because when we did not rehire the halftime small wastewater administrator, that money was taken away. So this would be new money.
Right. And I would like to, Mr. Chairman, I would like to also address the fact that, you know, you're well aware of the increased permitting that we have going on to this threefold of what we normally do. Our revenue is reflecting that as well. We recently increased our fees because we haven't in fifteen years. These are the types of things that needed to be happening to accommodate for this growth in staff. It's necessary to support the growth and development.
Well, that was the rest of my comment, the fact that you're, we do have a lot of increased revenue coming out of your office because of the increase in activity and the increase in fees. So as far as I'm concerned, the money is available.
Question. So is the workload increasing in your department for everyone that's in there?
Absolutely. No question. And then you want to throw the land use plan into the mix too after the NRP, which is all on me. And that's going to be, that's going to make it difficult for me to cover some of the bases I currently cover. So I think I don't see a, I don't see a break coming. And as you know, I don't see a break in subdivisions coming. I don't see a break in building permits and subject permits coming because once these subdivisions push through, all of those houses are going to be built. And I just don't see a break.
But I guess from, you, you've got only so many hours in the day and that first that individual's working X number of hours in the day, regardless of what they're doing. Their, their, their job is from this time in the morning till this time in the evening or in the afternoon. So regardless of what they're doing, they're still working the same with the number of hours you have added time onto what they're doing.
I don't, I don't have any ability to offer overtime. And so my, my employees, when they work extra time, it's been called, at least for this particular employee. And she's required to attend the evening meetings, you know, and she's part of that, that process. And so I, I do not encourage my staff to work extra hours, though it happens. But I don't have a way to compensate them for that.
Sure. On the small wastewater person that we're advertising and you mentioned earlier, you're going to be interviewing. What is our range, what is your range of advertisement wage?
So it's a planning technician position and it is, I believe, fifteen eighty-two is the beginning and the high would be greater than nineteen eighty-two. I, I don't remember exactly. But that's the range for that. That's what I'm looking for is someone in that range. Dennis, was that twenty? The previous small wastewater.
The top, Mr. Chairman, we're in all of this. The top end, I'd like to know what that nineteen is.
That would be someone coming in with experience.
And I guess my, my way of justifying this, commissioners is up until this point, I'm not questioning the fact that this individual is in, is not, is not deserving this rate. Based on the workload and I, I totally get all that. How I'm, we're having a struggle and is the fact up to this point, and we definitely need consistency. I won't argue that here. But up to this point, every department that's came to us has been able to reinstall a merit raise within their department and still stay within their current budget. Pay with that is where I have a problem making an exception. However, to try to justify this in my mind, I'm wondering if, if it would be possible to take the fifty-four cents an hour from the top of your wage and say, okay, we're not going to be able to pay your small wastewater. I'm just saying your, your rate is nineteen dollars fifty-four cents. Okay, now it's nineteen.
I understand.
Well, I do. So that way it's not exactly, I mean, your waste, small wastewater is already put it above into a budget amendment no matter what. But in my mind, we're only going that far. Do you follow where I'm going with this?
Oh, I do. Yeah, I do.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the big bump for me was this other addition to staff. I think this, this eleven hundred bucks for this position is more than covered by the increase in fees and the increase activity. That's how I justify it. Do you follow me? It wasn't, it wasn't the same as previous departments staying within your payroll, but within the overall budget here. The increased revenue based on the activity pays for this increase. Now, the big bump was the small wastewater position, you follow me? But this one is more than paid for by the increase in fees. That's how I, I process the increase.
I would like to see those numbers. In the public too.
Yeah.
And they're available to you. I believe that they're provided to you monthly by the Treasury Department or.
I don't know where we have them, but they are available.
This is the scale. So what did you say your entry level was?
It's, I think it's a grade twelve.
Grade twelve is fifteen ten to nineteen thirty-seven.
Yeah, I think I was only looking at the early steps.
Correct.
Well, let me ask you a question. Are you drawing a comparison? What Joy is asking for or what, what Colleen's request was?
I'm trying to get to some consistency. Yes.
Okay, well, in my mind, the difference is in Colleen's budget, she had X number of dollars budgeted for sale. And she lost to high-paid employees and filled those with lesser paid employees. And so her savings came from the difference between the lesser paid employee and the higher paid employee that she lost. So she stayed within her overall budget.
She did.
Where Joy's budget, we took all that money away from her as far as her salary is concerned. So what her salaries were originally budgeted for is what she's paying right now today. Yep.
Mr. Chair, again, this, this speaks to the inconsistency and the, I guess, the inequality of these decisions is that just because a department has money, suddenly it's okay for those employees to get merit. That makes no sense to me.
No, it doesn't.
What, if I had known when I had thirty-five thousand dollars in my budget, that I could have just reassigned it to my staff.
Yeah.
Hey, I had to come in here and been like, hey, give all my planners, you know, five grand or ten grand or whatever, but that's not, the whole point is to save money. And so I didn't touch that money. And you asked me not to touch that money. I respected that decision and I, I would never, I would never reassign that money. But to me, this doesn't, that's not the way it works, but that's my pain. So I just, but you took away that money, which I understood.
Well, that's, that's the point I was trying to make. Colleen still had that in her budget for overall budget, children, saving.
Right.
Where you, we took that money away from.
Right.
So.
Well, you, well, and you took a position away from it.
Yeah, exactly.
So here you gave two whole positions back, which I think obviously were necessary. But then on top of that, you gave them more money and I read, and I'm not sure if this is true, but that after six months, some of those employees will get a raise just for being there six months or, and I don't know what that means. And, and so that's, that's difficult for me to understand.
I totally understand where you're coming from. Hopefully the new chair can take care of that or the board can take care of that because it's something we got to get along.
Absolutely.
Really good. Dossie?
I would just tell you, Mr. Chairman, that, and I think you and I've had this discussion and I've had the discussion a little bit with Commissioner Livingston, but in our committee that we were asked to look at benefits and pay and, and that type of thing. We are looking at that, of course, but everything ties together. And so we've also been kind of drawn in to looking at, at the rate scale and at COLA and how that affects everything. Not getting into dollar totals at this point per budget, but into personnel issues and how that affects things. So just to let you know, we are still working on all that and we will be looking more at how this gets affected and how we do the benefit changes. We're talking about changes with using what we have for existing information, which is a little tough at times. So just so you know, we're still working on it. So hopefully within the next few months, we will have some answers on what might work better and give some credence to, to how elected officials and department heads would be able to move forward.
Okay, we're kind of getting off on a read. Need to make a decision on that. What player? Any more?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the fifty-four cent an hour increase, merit increase for this individual.
I have a second. I'll say it. Just go. But, yeah.
My, my only discussion is the, previously we approved these merit raise increases with the, the straight back that in June, things could totally change and you may be forced to reevaluate everybody. And that's still understood. Okay.
Well, you know, the only comment that I have and I'll basically reiterate continuing comment is when it's come, I don't know, but we're going to be up against a severe budget crisis in the future. And we want to make damn sure that we compensate good employees that we have. So we can keep them because like my mind, when the budget crisis comes, we will be laying all people. And I think Joy and every elected in the department, they understand that. That we're going to say, okay, you got to touch the budget twenty-five percent or whatever it is. And the only thing they can do is cut people and I, I think they're all aware of it.
I just want that out there. I agree. And as long as everybody's on the same page with that.
And I just, and I truly believe that the private sector is going to rebound quicker than the public sector. I mean, we're seeing it already. Look at construction, the way construction go on in Park County. And all of the subdivisions that we have, those people are anticipating selling those lots and somebody's going to buy them and build houses off. So there's going to be jobs in the private sector and I want to make sure that we are compensating all people enough to keep them working. We got some great people working.
Mr. Chairman, I, I struggle with this a bunch. I agree that the private sector might be going. I agree that the private sector might be going back, but the private sector is struggling right now. There's folks that are out of work. And.
Because of COVID.
Yeah, and I'm. And then there's two trains of thought there. One is compensate them now because we got the money. The other is, you know, coming from a small business background is save as much as you can to, to stay afloat as long as you can. And so do we do that? That's, that's what I'm struggling with is do we, do we hold on to what we have right now? And, and as much as we can right now, so that we can ride the way, you ride a little bit longer until things maybe turn around. And I, I don't have the answer.
I mean, I, I totally understand your point and I guess I would agree with you to a certain extent. And coming from my own small business background, I would agree with it. But coming from the government sector. We have to provide services to our constituents who are the taxpayer of the park county. And in particular, in planning and zoning offices, which is absolutely home in right now. We've got to provide those services the best we can as long as we. If that makes sense.
It, it all makes, it all makes sense and it all does.
Yeah. Any further comments on the motion?
The only thing that I would say is, is I do know that Joy has come to us twice on this employee over a year or so. You know, we didn't get the six month and, and we didn't do the year and we didn't do the, the budget time. And, and I think on this particular case, it, it may be overdue because of no change and. And the job enhancements that have happened since even when she asked for it the first time, I think the job has gotten much worse. Much harder, um, busier type of thing. So I think that's, I'm going back in my mind as to how long this has been happening and how fair that is.
It's been going on a while. I have, I have no problem justifying. I really don't. Anyway, other questions, discussions, comments? All of them, further than most things, bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, one, two, okay. The public, motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And, and the new chair and Dossie committee will work on your.
And I'll be there. Yeah.
Well, and Mister Chairman, it's a concern throughout the department.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'm.
And elected.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I've got some ideas and, and I'm going to, you know, hopefully for all the board. We can all discuss them because it's damn sure got to get figured out because this is.
Well, we do. We, we need to bring this to, there is absolutely no part about that. And I said that all along. And in fact, we balance the budget. If there's been any money left, we take care of our employees on a piecemeal basis. And moving forward, we got to, we got to call it. It's just the way of doing it. So anyway, with that being said, material, unless there are any comments, questions, or anything, most, Mr. Chairman, so, Mr. Garrett.
Second.
Good. All of them, further, bye-bye.
Bye.
You can turn off and turn on.